I see every, the board is, the full board is here.
Oh, okay, I just checked and I did not see that they were all here. Yeah, we are. Is it seven?
It is seven.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our virtual January town meeting. It is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021, seven o'clock. And may I have a roll call, please?
Certainly, ma'am mayor. President Linda Pinoir.
Present.
Commissioner Janice Duckett.
Present.
Commissioner Sarah Franklin.
Present.
And Dave Williams, town clerk, all present.
And we stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do I have consent to the agenda?
I consent to the agenda.
Janice, are you okay with the agenda?
Yes, I'm sorry, I consent to the agenda.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval of the minutes from the December 8th regular town 2021, I'm sorry, I should say 2020, regular town meeting in the December 22nd, 2020 board work session and the treasurer's report as of December 31st, 2020.
A motion, we approve the December 8th, 2020, December 22nd, December 22nd, 2020, meeting minutes and the treasurer's report as of December 31st, 2020.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
So moved. Next, we will go to our reports, our department reports. As always, we start with public safety. Chief Bruce.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of December, we had three disorderly report calls, four domestic calls, three business alarms, one vehicle accident, a fraud report, an armed person report, which in fact, that individual was arrested. It was more of a domestic, but individual was arrested. We had five house alarms, one hit and run, four check on the welfare, one suspicious person, one threat complaint, one assault, found property, trespassing, a non-compliance where a business wasn't in compliance with what they were supposed to be doing in reference to COVID, and one injured person. As usual, I've had several conference call meetings with individuals, with the Prince George's County Chiefs Association, the Maryland State Police Association, the Maryland Chiefs Association, several calls with the Office of Emergency Management around COVID-related things, as well as officer safety things that's going on in and around the county and around the state, as well as earlier, actually toward the end of last month, I actually testified before the House State delegation on PG 302-21, which is a speed monitoring system for residential and school zones, which is actually the speed camera. Legislation that they're looking to pass, actually, this is the second time I've testified on behalf of the town for that. So hopefully that will go through. Actually had a vendor who actually contacted the town that we actually spoke to in reference to speed and red light camera. We had a meeting with them, as well as participated with the other town staff, Officer Irby and Code Officer Stewart and myself. The food drive that we had here at the town, we actually took the donations over to the Maryland Food Bank and was helping them distribute this stuff for that cause. As usual, myself, Sergeant Irby and Corporal Demaros, we still patrol the town throughout this COVID crisis and COVID response, which seems like we'll be in for a little while. Yes, there were four tickets issued for parking and we wrote several speed tickets for the month of December as well. Just to give everybody an update heads up, yes, the town police department is aware of the events from last week. We are closely monitoring those things even up until the election. I've had several calls with PGPD as well as the Sheriff's Department. Actually, I just got off the phone with a sheriff's deputy just before got on. So we are aware of the events. We are monitoring everything and we will act accordingly. So there are no other questions. If anybody has any questions, I'm open. If not, that's it.
My question was just about the speed camera vendor. They called us, you said?
Yes, it was a meet, more of a meet and greet, kind of see what they offered.
I was wondering if the legislation looked so promising, we were already reaching out.
Oh, well, hopefully it is looking promising, but you know, everybody knows that this is coming. So, and we're the only municipality with a police department that doesn't have a speed camera program, so that'll help as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chief Bruce? Thank you, chief. Moving onward, Public Works is Darnell Bond on the call.
Yes, I am, ma'am.
See, I don't have your picture there, but there you are. Okay, now we can listen to your report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year to everyone and hope everyone as well. For the month of December, for Public Works related items, I joined Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation Community Partners Meeting. And our Public Works crew also assisted with the drop off of the non-perishable items to Trinity Church for the food drive. Maintenance and beautification, we completed the holiday decor setup. Crews trimmed back rose bushes and boxwoods at Town Hall, fertilized and top seeded the monument, cut and removed leaves at Town Hall, truck 215 was outfitted with new tires. The floors were completed at Public Works from the flood in November. And crews extended the French drain at the Public Works facility to continue to combat the flooding issue. We are currently looking for quotes to concrete a portion of the drain that's alongside the building for street and sidewalk. We made brackets for the new stop sign at Church Street and Service Lane. Of course, it's not in here, but that is put up as of now. We had sort of an impromptu meter blitz in conjunction with our police department and our code enforcement. WSSC contractors perform hydrant and storm drain checks townwide. Weather-related, the trucks, well, our two pickup trucks and our tractor was outfitted ahead of a supposed winter weather event. Pretty much it resulted in a dry run and we had a few icy spots the following morning that just had to be taken care of. December had multiple moderate rain events, one of which closed the Water Street Bridge. This same event resulted in pounding of water along Church Street and School Lane. Crews had to clear out the storm drains. All right. Bulk day accumulations for solid waste, things going to the landfill were 4.06 tons. And bulk day accumulations for yard waste collections were 3.54 tons. And we also had one dump body rental for the month. Any questions, comments, concerns? All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Darnell. You guys have been doing a really good job around town. I've been driving through and we still, I think, we may be a little bit shabby, but we're clean and it is extremely presentable compared to what I've been through in other places. Next up would be Will Morgan for our finance report.
Good evening, everyone. So just looking at our finances for the month of December, ending the year or halfway through the year, we continue to monitor our parking meters, which we know has not really reached the point that we wanted to. And a lot of that is still geared towards COVID-19. Right now, we've been able to bring in just from parking meters 47,000, but that's only 16% of the budget. So we have some work that needs to be done there, though it may not happen for this fiscal year. Also, with parking fines, we actually are doing pretty good. We budgeted 21,000. We've brought 15,000 thus far, which is about 71% of that line item. Moving down to the grants, so we have a police state aid that we get quarterly throughout the fiscal year. We anticipated that we would see it in late December, but we did not. So probably in the month of January, next Treasury Report, we'll see an additional, I believe, a little bit over, under 4,000 on that line item for police state aid. Just going down to our taxes, which is of course our biggest percent of our budget. Right now, we've been able to collect $261,000 in real property taxes, 89% of that line item. So we're doing pretty good. I actually looked, checked in a bank account today and I seen a deposit for a sizable amount from Prince George's County. So I believe it might be taxes for the month, from the prior month. So I'm hoping so. And if that's the case, then it'll bring us, it will eclipse that 295 mark. And of course, we still have a few months left, so we'll see what happens there. And I also was able to receive one of our sizable public utility tax bills for Verizon, so that went out as well. Looking at expenses, there's on expenses and on the revenue side, as we do like a year-end review or year-end adjustment, there's going to be some areas that we're going to be able to slice down on the expense side where we haven't really used the budget thus far, or as much as we anticipated. And we'll do that on the revenue side as well. There's public property maintenance, as Darnell had mentioned, we had some flood damage within a month of these, well, we paid it out in the month of December. So that's some things that we did put in an insurance claim for those items. So that's an area that we had to spend a little bit of money for our public property as well. Not much other going on in that area, but in the police department, you'll see 16,000 for our debt service payment. So that's one of two installments for this fiscal year that we paid out. That's the third installment in total for that, for that agreement for the vehicles. And moving forward, you know, as I mentioned, down in the profit and loss for December, we only, in total, we really only brought in $7,400 for fines, licenses and permits. I continue to mention that that's an area that we once saw roughly about $25,000 a month. So it obviously has been sizably decreased over the months. And a few things just to talk about, we have, we've submitted for reimbursement for the CARES Act funding. We have not received that just yet. We know that we were approved and allocated for that amount. We haven't received the reimbursement just yet. However, I did see some additional deposits from Prince George's County in our bank account today. The thing with that is they don't, it doesn't have any remittance as of yet. They typically send that stuff via email in or mail. And I haven't received the remittance for what those items are. So it's possible that they could be COVID-related reimbursements, but I won't just know. That's something I can report on in the following month or, yes, in February. As I mentioned, we'll do some year-end adjustments towards the end of the year. Sometimes we do mid-year adjustments, but I think it's safe for us to just do one year-end adjustment since things are ever so changing. And then a few things that I've worked on this, or in the month of December, still going on is of course the business license certifications and mailing those certifications out. Thus far, we have about 40 businesses that has applied and we have some more ongoing. I actually additionally, I additionally sent out some more mailings to other businesses last week as well. And I'm also doing a financial training through one of our vendors that we've used in the past. We had a credit for some finance classes. So that's something I'll schedule for the month of March as well. So, and it's virtual, of course. So other than that, those are the only things I have to report on unless there's any other questions.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Morgan?
This is Patty. I was looking in the packet and I didn't see any of the information. Is it in there someplace and I just missed it?
It's after the minutes.
Okay, so after I saw the approved minutes, I thought that was part of the minutes from last month, but that's this month. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none. David, we'll hear from the clerk's office. Do you have anything?
I have nothing prepared to report at this time.
Okay. Moving on to our committees. Reports. Do we have someone from Greenwell here today? There's Tia.
Oh. Let's try. Try this. There we go.
That's much better. You don't look like Tia. Hi Jacob, how you doing?
Good, how are you guys?
Fine.
All right, so you know, I'm not going to hold you here too long. Today is session eve, so the General Assembly will reconvene tomorrow at noon. From my understanding, lawmakers have headed into Annapolis today to begin getting tested for COVID-19 to make sure, you know, when they're going into the voting room, they're not positive. The House and Senate have been outfitted with plexiglass and, you know, all the desks have been spread out to maintain social distancing. Because of this, and you know, with the House having 141 members, some of those members will be voting from one of the delegation rooms in the House Office Building, while the other members will be voting in the traditional State House. And the House will then, you know, only hold session for now on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. The Senate, everyone was able to fit into the original Senate chamber while maintaining social distancing. And so they will maintain their daily voting as usual. So we're getting a better idea of the major topics for this year, a lot of which seems like, you know, a 2020 do-over. So we're going to see sports betting finally tackled and worked out. And this may come as part of leadership's Minority Equity Plan for 2021, which should also include some sort of police reform package. And we should have more information on that in the next couple of weeks. We're also going to see Kerwin come back with Democrats saying that they have enough money to fund the education reforms until at least 2026, without having to tap into any of the other funds. Should they choose to override the governor's veto, which they would, they would in theory have enough votes to do so. Another veto override, the Democrats have all but promised is for the HBCU bill, which would give about 500 million to HBCUs around the state to help settle several longtime lawsuits. And finally, and most recently, the General Assembly will take up Governor Hogan's billion-dollar relief package, which would provide stimulus checks for Marylanders who qualified for the earned income tax credit in either 2019 or 2020, whichever the most recent filing is. Now, speaking of relief, with Democrats gaining full control of the federal government, we are anticipating another stimulus package, perhaps one that looks closer to the CARES Act from earlier last year. If this is the case, we can expect to see more relief money for Prince George's County and for Upper Marlboro specifically. In that case, you know, we'd love to help the town draft plans that we can secure those funds as early as possible. You know, after this year, we have experienced drafting plans from multiple municipalities and even a couple counties across Maryland. So we're very comfortable with formatting and the qualifications. And we've learned just how creative we can get with these funds to provide relief to local governments and your constituents. Now, for Upper Marlboro with this session, we've been keeping in contact with Senator Peters' office regarding this year's bond bill for the town. He also has all of the information the town has sent over regarding the flooding on Water Street. And the town has submitted testimony for a local bill that would study historic and recent flooding in Prince George's County. And so that will be heard this session as well. We should also have a date soon for when Delegate Harrison's bill authorizing speed cameras in Upper Marlboro will be heard in committee as Chief Bruce mentioned before. And finally, with sessions starting back up, you know, we're going to be sending out weekly newsletters and the interactive bill tracking sheets so that you all have a single, simple place to see all the bills that may impact the town or that, you know, are just introduced by members of your delegation. So that's where we're at going into session. We'll be in touch every week to keep you up to speed on the legislative asks and, you know, what's all happening in Annapolis. I know that was sort of a lot of information, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Jacob? I thank you very much, Jacob, for keeping us informed. This session has a lot of things that we're concerned about, as you know, and I know that we're in good hands with you looking after us.
Yep. It's our pleasure. And like you said, you know, we'll be tracking speed cameras, flooding and the bond bill. Those are sort of our three hot topics for the town. And, you know, anything that happens or changes, we'll be texting Kyle to keep you guys in the know as soon as anything happens.
Appreciate that. Okay, no more questions for Greenwell. We will move on to the Historical Committee.
Hi, this is Patty. Not much to report. We didn't have a meeting last month due to Christmas and no sense in doing it. Everybody's real busy. So we will have a meeting on the 16th and we plan to work with United Methodist Church, Union United Methodist Church, to get something for Black History Month for February. That's all I have.
Okay, do we have someone from the Events Committee?
Don't know if anyone's on. I know that they did not meet. There's just not really anything to plan because we can't gather. So.
Moving on to Sustainable Communities. I don't. Is Evelyn on at all? I don't see Evelyn on the call. What Sustainables is working on will come up later in the meeting, so we'll just go with, when that comes up, we'll discuss that. The Arts Council?
For the Arts Council, we will be scheduling another meeting. The last meeting, we're still at a place where we're just trying to figure out who's going to take the helm. But otherwise, there are some other things that we wanted to tackle as well as any prohibitions regarding arts and what we can do, so what we can't do. So there's some, I would say, some paperwork and things that Kyle and I need to at least talk about to make sure that we have as much information together for the group as possible. And so some of that is something that's in progress. It's a work in progress. But Kyle will be reaching out to the Arts Committee to set up our next meeting.
Any other questions for the Arts Council? Hearing none, moving on to the Green Team.
So the Green Team actually meets tomorrow. They haven't met yet this month. And we'll be discussing some, the parking lot, the Church Street parking lot, and how to maybe formulate some kind of public involvement around greening that and just a way to get community interested. And also about which areas of town are areas that we can actually do things with. So I think that's where we're at for tomorrow's meeting.
Okay. Do we have a representative from the Cert Team?
I will speak about the Cert Team. They met last month on the 12th of December. They did it virtually, as they do every month. For the month of December, all of the members, not in one time, but they, for the month, they had a total of 358 outreach and/or education hours. And the number of training hours they did for the month was 25 hours. And that's a combination of multiple people taking different training. So that's what they did for last month and that's it.
Thank you for that. Okay, Commissioner reports. Commissioner Duckett, do you have anything to report?
Um, not at this moment.
Commissioner Franklin?
Don't have anything to report.
I would like to take this opportunity to let everyone know the food drive was very successful. I was very, I won't say surprised, because I know we have generous people in this town and it proved itself out. We had, I think, six tables full of donated food. I was very happy about that. I don't know if you saw the pictures on social media. I think Kyle, you did put them out on Facebook. So I was very pleased and we'll be partnering with him periodically throughout the year. One of the things that I have been doing and listening to, especially more so in the last few weeks, is the COVID-19. I have meetings and calls on that several times a month. The latest is on the vaccination situation. It was a slow rollout, but I think they've got it together now and they have enough people vaccinated so they can vaccinate more people. It was a personnel problem initially. They did not have the manpower. And now I think they're going, and so there is, and I believe Kyle put it up, how they have a phase, just like they did for opening and closing. So if you do get asked to be vaccinated, I urge you to do so. The only way we're going to get a handle on this is vaccination. And so if you are called upon during a segment of time in which you can, I urge you to do so. I will be getting vaccinated. Most people I know will be. In the meantime, we have, the second strain has been reported in Maryland. Hopefully, we can keep that under control. Do use caution and also, when possible, as soon as you can, get that vaccination. Do use caution and also, when possible, as soon as you can, get that vaccination. And now on to the business portion.
Mayor, I just wanted to say that we did have a representative of the Fire Department on board. They were on Kendall Wallace. Oh, he's back. Hey, Kendall.
Hey.
I know you're in the middle now.
Nah, I'm back. So we are staying busy with COVID, running calls and everything. We are in a major project right now, building a rescue engine, which is, we have an engine and a rescue squad in our firehouse right now. And this rescue engine is basically both of them combined in one piece. We've got the contract ready. We're just figuring out funds and how everything would work out with that. I know in the past, the town has contributed a little bit of money towards it and we put thanks to the town, Upper Marlboro, on the side of our current fire truck, and we plan on doing that now. I know with COVID, the budgets hurt everybody, including us and you guys too, but I just wanted to keep you guys in the loop with everything going on.
Okay, appreciate that. I'm sorry, I did not know that you were on the call or we called on you earlier.
I'm sorry too.
That's okay. I'm just glad you're with us.
Yes, ma'am. That's basically all I have. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for the Fire Department?
Kendall, is there a title that I can identify you with for the minutes?
Yes, Captain Wallace.
Thank you, Captain.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, moving on to our business section of this meeting. The first thing up is Resolution 2021-01 IPS Parking Enforcement Contract. This is for a board vote. David, if you could read the resolution?
Yes, Mayor. Town of Upper Marlboro, Resolution 2021-01, Session Regular Town Meeting, dated January 12th, 2021. A resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro to award a contract to manage and maintain the town's website, web-based parking ticket issuance hardware, software, records, and payment solutions, and to terminate the prior vendor contract.
Okay, do I have any discussion on this before we vote?
Don't. We discussed this last time, so.
Well, I'm putting it out for the public. The public always has a right to ask a question before we vote. Hearing none?
Okay, so I, am I still, I move that we pass Resolution 2021-01 to award a contract for the web-based parking and terminate our prior vendor contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Oh, so noted.
Next up is Resolution 2021-02.
Mayor. There was a comment. There was a comment. It's in the chat, though.
Good question in the chat.
So the benefit of changing vendors is that the current vendor does not communicate with our new parking equipment, the parking meters and the kiosks we have downtown that we purchased. This vendor is the same vendor that does those, so all their equipment will talk to each other and the, and our parking enforcement officer will not have to check two databases. And also, they work better with the Maryland MBA with automatic flagging. So there's a lot of benefits and it's the same cost to the town as the previous vendor. Hope that answers your questions, Jeff.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we will go on to Resolution 2021-02, awarding the town HR service contract. This again is a board vote, and I will ask for any questions prior to the vote.
I have a question. We're just saying we're going to award the contract now, not who it's going to, or are we saying?
The board does have to select a vendor. As the board's aware, we've talked about the past couple months, only one vendor showed up for the, for the discussion with the board. And it was Insurity was the one that went, and they are also the most competitive and came in well under budget than the other vendors.
And they're local.
And they're local, yeah, they're Prince George's County local and work with other Prince George's County municipalities as well.
And you received the?
I viewed the presentation and every time I had a question, Will went ahead and asked it for me. But I did have that one other question, Kyle, about the training. Did they get back to you on that?
They have not yet. I think today was a busy day, they mentioned, because they're working with a bunch, they're doing some stuff with the delegation, the startup of the obsession tomorrow. Hopefully, I can get that soon. But from my understanding was they recommend the training and they'll try to cover it as much as possible in their current contract if their HR person can do the training. But if they have to call in another vendor, that's a cost the town will have to assess.
And I mean, I think it's going to be the same.
Well, from what I read with other companies, also, it was pretty standard that you paid for the training.
Yes.
It's not outrageous.
So, all right, yeah, that answers my questions.
So just for clarification, because the resolution as it's written is blank as to who the board's awarding the contract to. So whenever the motion's made, you just have to make a motion to the company name to award the contract. And then they will change that in the final draft before signature.
Is it just Insurity or is there more, like, that has to be said to award it? Does it have to say LLC or whatever initials?
It's whatever the board wants to consider. Like I mentioned, there's only one that the board had a chance to interact with.
Right. I personally feel comfortable with them after their presentation and reading all their documentation, and they are really responsive. And of course, staff works well with them. So that's my opinion.
Janice, did you have any questions? Commissioner Duckett?
No, no, that was the one. I felt like I was really comfortable with Insurity. I think they'll be a great fit. I think that some of the other towns that they serve, from what I understand, they're doing a pretty, really good job. So I think we'll benefit really well from this relationship.
Oh, I think so as well. They did a very good presentation for us. So David, did I have you read this resolution?
Not yet, but I'm prepared to, Mayor.
I would appreciate it if you would do so.
Okay, the town, excuse me, the Town of Upper Marlboro, Resolution 2021-02, Session Regular Town Meeting, dated January 12th, 2021. A resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro to award a contract to provide human resources services.
Do I have a motion?
I motion we adopt Resolution 2021-02 to award a contract to provide human resources services to Insurity.
Do I have a second?
Did you hear me second? Sorry.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion?
All aye, so noted.
Okay, moving on. This is Resolution 2021-03, Supporting Planning Assistance. This is a board vote. This comes to us through planning assistance to municipalities and communities through park and planning. This would give us a, I'm not sure if I want to really say town manager, downtown manager.
Kind of like a Main Street manager?
Main Street, a business manager, to manage the businesses downtown and work with the businesses downtown.
So I, and Brett, I read over it, but can you kind of, I don't know, give us an overview of what they would do and how it would work?
I can take that if you'd like, Mayor.
Okay.
So much Sustainable Communities has been in contact with Park and Planning, trying to figure out how they can get a business group up and started, like a Chamber of Commerce moving forward. And it's been realized that between the volunteer hours and the staff hours and trying to get with the businesses, there's not a whole lot, no one has a whole lot of time to invest. So Park and Planning offered to help possibly award a grant to the town to hire a consultant who will meet with all the businesses, look at the downtown, go through kind of whatever strategies the town currently has for economic development, how that works with the county's strategies for economic development in the Main Street, Maryland program, and kind of put together a comprehensive plan in place. Just bring everyone to the table and just move this project forward. There's no cost to the town. It's not a matching grant. The Park and Planning just requires a resolution of support from the municipality that's applying for the grant. So here it's our Sustainable Communities Work Group applying, so we're just certifying the towns behind them. We did this once before, about a year or two ago. We did it for the mural application for Park and Planning. However, then it was decided, determined that the state actually gave the money, the grant funding out was a better option. So we passed the resolution to the pass, but we never used it. So that's pretty much, so this isn't solidifying anything, this just goes with the application package to Park and Planning to consider. But it's for a consultant. We did get an email today that it's not going to be like a town staff member that's paying for, it's a, like a third-party consultant to get everything up and running.
Like if we had hired a consultant ourselves, but the county will hire the consultant. So we won't have any of that. They'll just get someone in to.
Yeah, no cost to the town.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood it properly. Thanks, guys.
Okay. David, would you please read the resolution?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The Town of Upper Marlboro, Resolution 2021-03, Session Regular Town Meeting, Date January 12th, 2021. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Upper Marlboro to approve an application for a planning assistance to municipalities and communities, PAMC grant, offered by the Prince George's County Planning Department to provide technical aid and hire a business management consultant.
Do I have a motion?
I motion we adopt Resolution 2021-03 regarding the application for planning.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All aye, so noted.
Just, this is Patty, just a quick note on the, in the agenda or the packet, the last line of the bold hire has two i's in it.
I already circled it. I was going to tell him anyway.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, so noted.
Okay. This item four is the hiring of a third town police officer. This is for board approval. Before I ask if there are any questions, I will let Kyle cover this. And hopefully, by the time he's done, you won't have any questions.
Thanks, Mayor. So the board's been discussing for a while about the expansion of patrol hours within the Town of Upper Marlboro. The current budget actually allowed for a patrol officer to be hired midway through the year, but we're still hiring them a bit later in the year, so there will still be a cost saving. We're not going to be eating up that entire line item for that third patrol officer. But after checking with Mr. Morgan, seeing how the tax revenues came in stronger than anticipated, the town can afford to hire a third officer. We are able to hire this third officer mainly because we have most of the major equipment. We have a patrol vehicle sitting for them, the 2016 Ford Taurus. We have an extra radio that they can use, vests and all that. After the third officer, there will be some additional costs if the town wants to hire a fourth, fifth, sixth police officer to further expand coverage hours because we don't have enough police cars and other stuff. But it's because we're pretty much just funding the position itself, it's a pretty cost-effective hire. And it's also popped up with the town moving forward with its annual county tax differential program. The county pretty much evaluates the services that the town provides on an annual basis and uses that to calculate its tax, the county tax on town residents, depending on how many county services town residents depend on. So because of our, I guess, drop in patrol hours, that no fault, but pretty much the, just due to officer safety and whatnot, and we used to have three to four patrol officers at a time, so we're only at two right now. Our tax differential went from 70, we qualified for 70% of the patrol tax differential, down to 40%. Hiring a third officer and the expansion hours allow us to get up to 60% to meet it halfway. And then obviously, if we go to the full force again, four or five patrol officers again, we can qualify for 70 to 80%. That's based off of weekly patrol hours. So I think that pretty much covers it. Look, after talking to chief, it sounds like we could have an officer onboarded by springtime, just depending on how COVID is affecting like training with other agencies and background checks, but that's our timeline. Chief, you can let me know if I missed anything?
Sounds good.
I could take any questions, commissioners or the public.
This is Patty. What does this tax differential do for you?
So for the town itself, it does nothing. For the residents, it affects how much you pay in county taxes.
Who pays in county taxes?
Residents on their property taxes. If you look at your tax bill, the county tax rate will adjust based on the services that the town provides.
Okay. And my second question?
It's a small percentage, but it's still a benefit.
My second question is, are we going to have somebody patrolling finally at night or on the weekends then, once we get this person in? And are we able to train these people or do we have to go through the rigor and morale that we did last time?
I don't think we have to.
So yes, we will have an evening shift and the rigor that happened before was due to a situation prior to me coming here, but we already have the agreement with the county. So that officer will be trained by Prince George's County Police Officers.
I'm sorry, I thought we said that once we had somebody trained, we would train them.
We have a two-year agreement with the county and it's much easier and faster to get them through that process than it is us doing it ourselves.
Okay, I thought we were supposed to be able to do it. Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a question because I just want to make sure.
Um, I have a question because, um, I just want to make sure that we are it just, it feels like a very low cost to the town, like are we not providing a competitive salary? I don't. Especially with concerns around policing right now, I don't want us to be, uh, bringing in an officer at, you know, a bargain basement price and getting exactly what we're paying for, because we really cannot have that. Uh, so I just want to make sure that's in there.
No, it's, um, it's not a, it's, it's not a, it's a very competi-, it's a competitive salary, um, because they're coming in as a, uh, as Officer First Class, Chief, correct? They're not coming in as a Corporal or Sergeant or anything. Um, they're coming in as, as a patrol officer. Um, so it, it's competitive. The main cost savings to the town right now is the fact that we're hiring so late in the budget year, and we have the equipment ready for them to, to get hired. Um, it, that's where the real cost savings come from.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing done. Do I have a motion to hire the third police officer?
I motion, we hire a third police officer for the town.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All eyes so noted.
And we'll obviously be working with the HR firm, this will be their first test.
It'll be the first test of the HR firm.
And we'll be talking more about, um, I'm sure the commissioners will want to speak to the, whatever, the candidates want to. So we're going to work through that process, this, this gives us the, the authority to start moving the process forward, but you'll see um, job descriptions. It's not like we have someone lined up. So this is the first step on, in the hiring process.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is very good. I mean, I know that the town, I've heard a lot of concerns about, um, patrolling on the weekends as well. So, um, I think that, um, some of the constituents here in the town, they will be very happy to hear this.
I don't, I just wasn't sure that this was going to cover weekends. I thought just evenings, but I maybe missed that.
It, um, gives more opportunity, or Chief can speak more, but it gives us a lot more flexibility with three than, than with two to put in some weekends. Correct, Chief?
Yes, I mean, I, I have done a schedule where, uh, we will have some weekend hours, but it, it will be mainly days and evenings and a couple of hours during the weekend. It may not be every single weekend, but it'll be more than, more weekends than what we have currently.
Because we need like, we need five, five officers to get more of a full coverage, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our last business item. Which is Charter Amendment Resolution Number CAR 2021-01. This is for a board discussion. And, uh, ladies, I do believe you have everything in your packet. Is there anything you would like to discuss?
Did you want me to get a quick overview, Mayor, with the public too?
Uh, yes, you can.
Just a quick background to everyone. Um, so this, uh, this Charter Amendment Resolution was, uh, requested by the previous board back in June. Um, everything got pushed behind, uh, because of COVID and, and losing a corner or whatnot. So, um, staff is just trying to clear out the, uh, the things sitting on the back burner, so we can get more projects moving forward. Um, and this Charter Amendment Resolution does a couple thing, does, uh, three main things. Um, nothing too, um, uh, nothing too crazy. The first is it establishes in the charter currently the only, um, two, the only two personnel listed in the charter is the town attorney and the town clerk. Um, obviously, we have a couple more people than that, so this adds in the Chief of Police to officially, officially set the police department in the charter, as well as the town administrator, just to set some general duties, um, in there. It also allows the term President and Mayor to be used interchangeably. President will still be the formal, resident board of town commissioners will be the formal one to sign contracts and whatnot. But if like, uh, out in public or whatnot, or more, um, public events, it, it can be used as mayor as well. Um, this is how Eagle Harbor and some other municipalities do it as well. Um, so we don't have to change the whole charter where it says President, it just says that they can be used interchangeably. And it also makes a couple minor grammatical adjustments within that, the personnel section of the charter as well. Um, so just a quick timeline, um, it's not being introduced or anything tonight, this is purely discussion, and the town will be holding a public hearing and will be advertising it, uh, more on Tuesday, February 9th, 2020, right before the February town meeting. Um, and then the board will have a chance to discuss at the February work session, any input from the public. Um, and then it can go up for introduction and passage as early as March, the month of town meeting. And then it actually, once it passes, sits, um, for a period of, of a month or two. And then it can go into effect if it has not been contested by a, um, a, uh,
referendum.
I'm blanking. I'm sorry.
Referendum.
Referendum.
Yeah, so if, uh, that certain percentage of the voters don't want it to go through, they can get a petition and push it forward, and it cannot move forward. Um.
Can I add? Aye, two. Um, Charter Amendment Resolutions, uh, usually deal with at most, one section at a time, so you'll notice this all refers back to the Charter Section 82 positions. So we were able to, to, uh, compile all these changes within just Section 82. That's just an FYI, uh, so you know, going forward, each Charter Amendment Resolution that we do is restricted to one section at a time.
So my only little thing, um, that you guys know is that I just think that instead of adding or she, where it says he, that it would be more inclusive to use the term they. So that is my only two cents about this section.
And that section was the section, the, uh?
So there, in 8213, it says he or she.
Yes.
In eight to fifty-nine A.
And not use the term he or she, he slash she.
Yeah, I think it's just more.
I mean, it's the he or she, so.
I think Commissioner Franklin's proposing that it would be the word they.
Mm-hmm.
Except that they may vote on any questions before the board.
I think this is something that we might, and this whole, uh, resolution will go before Kevin.
Right.
We'll seek his advice on that. He has never used they before, so we might ask him his legal opinion on it as well. So we will note that.
Okay. And I, that is just, I know that's not relevant to the passing of this.
Yeah. And I definitely don't want to be that, something that I can't move on, so that we can move this forward, okay, honestly?
No, I just wanted to bring that up, but we, we're just passing this resolution now, and then that will tr-
We're not passing anything. We're not passing anything.
Oh, so I don't have to make a motion on any?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
This was just.
If I may, if I may interject, um, right now, I believe your copy, unless you got a new one today, the last page has a schedule of dates, uh, that you can reference. All right, we just figured this out, all the dates, it's, uh, today. But we have, uh, we're not calling this an introduction on purpose because we need to report what our introduction date is. And right now, we have date of introduction and passage happening on the same, at the same meeting on March 9th. So we have to go through, uh, notice requirements, public hearing requirements and timelines. Uh, so there's, uh, we, we're currently have the public hearing scheduled for February 9th. It'll be immediately preceding the town meeting. Uh, but it will be posted for a period of twenty-one days, uh, before that public hearing. So come, uh, January 19th, that's when our notice of the public hearing goes out. Uh, uh, through our, I believe through our website, is that correct, Kyle? And, and, uh, um, also, uh, you know, a draft of this Charter Amendment Resolution will be available for all residents to inspect and compile any questions or notes or comments.
So we don't have to do anything to make that process happen?
Well, we're just, we're just kind of shedding a little light on this tonight, and purposely not calling it an introduction. Just wanted to explain why we weren't.
Okay.
It runs in the news, in, uh, Prince George's Post for four consecutive weeks, uh, required by law. And the final effective date, uh, after all, meeting all those requirements, wouldn't be until April 28th.
So Dave, generally, to move a resolution through a Charter Amendment Resolution, Resolution, it takes about three months, is that what?
Well, it's, it's basically fifty days from, uh, passage. And for that fifty-day length, there's a twenty-one day hearing, uh, notice, uh, and, and hearing requirement. So that's why, uh, you know, this is more chiseled in stone than any other regular resolution, uh, because it does go back and forth between the state, you know, we're changing our Bible, so to speak. Purposely meant not easy, and quick, so. Did I, did I answer?
Yes, thank you.
And this isn't really related to this, but I know we've bounced around, uh, changes to voting dates and number of board members. Doing this now, that's not going to affect our ability to do that later.
No.
Okay.
Now, we, we.
The whole purpose is good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can continue to, uh, suggest changes and discuss changes to other sections, but this is all in one section, we can do it all at one time.
Okay.
And as you can tell, the wording that has been changed in this, uh, is all in cap, all capitalized letters, so you what, what was changed? You don't have to keep going back and forth.
Yeah.
This is Patty, what's the yellow?
The yellow is something that, uh, I did for the purposes of seeing where these changes were made. And as, uh, President Pinoyar pointed out, um, the capitals do mean that's language added to the existing text. The brackets means items, uh, or language deleted from the existing law. And asterisks just mean this is, uh, verbiage that we're not addressing right now in this, uh, succession of sections that means it stays the same. But it's just omitted from this document, so this document wouldn't be fifty pages long.
Okay, so it's essentially for.
For the benefit of the viewers tonight, it won't be final like that. But those, all those brackets and capitals and asterisks do remain in the final Charter Amendment Resolution. So going forward in the future, anyone can tell what the last, uh, uh, adjustment or amendment that was, was made to that particular section.
And then it goes to the, uh, the state legislative services takes it and makes the user-friendly version. Um, that's cleaned up, that you can keep us online, but the official copy shows all the changes.
Correct, thanks, Kyle.
Um.
Thank you.
So moving forward, as we suggest making other changes, we need to be very careful and very thorough about what we want to do. You know, changing the charter is not as easy as it sounds. And that's probably that way for a very good reason. Okay, that concludes the business section, unless somebody else has a question or a comment. Uh, onto administrative updates. How do you have any project updates for us?
Oh, of course, Mayor. Um, so moving forward, the Heritage area, haven't heard anything too much from that, just that the consultant's still working on that. Um, the playground, I think we finally made some headway in the permitting process for the county. Um, financial policies are going to be happening in the next couple of months. Um, uh, the Pepco vehicle charging stations have hit, they're being installed by Pepco on county property in coordination with county, but it seems they're not open, they've been sitting the same way for a couple of months. Not sure what the holdup is there. Um, the mural grant application, the, the Arts Council's going to be meeting, talking about that. Main Street Maryland affiliate, um, the state was supposed to give me an update on that. Um, however, their office has been backed up because they've been issuing out a lot of economic, um, recovery grants from the state there. The, um, Main Street Maryland office was charged with helping with that. So they're pretty backlog. Um, employee handbook, um, next step for that will be the HR firm will get a copy of it, and, um, that'll be one of their first major projects with them. The town solar proposal, also waiting in Deep Pie. Um, once that's installed, or once that moves forward, it'll take only a day or two to install the, uh, the twenty-some solar panels um, to help offset the town's, um, Pepco bills. And if we generate more electricity in one month than the town hall building uses, it overflows into the other Pepco bills the town has, including public work, some of the public properties and the streetlights, so that's good. Um, the Western Branch Levy Engrating Project, we just got a letter today from the state, um, pretty much telling the county that they are going to move forward with the, um, uh, it, it appears the county asked the state for them to fill out some floodplain building prints. Um, and, uh, the state told them that they are not going to be working with the county on that. They're going to be working with the Maryland Department of the Environment and Army Corps of Engineers, and the project for the bridge is going to be moving forward. Um, so that's good to hear. Um, annexation, we have a meeting with the Moose tomorrow. Um, they're one of the more valuable properties over there, um, commercial, so we'll be meeting with them um, about an annexation consent agreement. Um, and, but we had an additional, uh, this past week, four more commercial properties signed over to the town. Um, it was kind of a sudden change. Um, so that's awesome to hear, those four right along 725, the, uh, the, um, auto dealership right there at the corner, 725 and 202. And then the four properties after that, um, all signed in, so that's awesome. So we're very close to our, um, goal of over twenty-five percent consent for the annex area. And we've had, oh goodness, only Home Depot's said no so far on the commercial side, and we actually removed them from the annexation, um, uh, plan because of that. So, but other than that, we have not had any negative, um, comments from any of the businesses, which is awesome. Um, Town Capital Improvement Budget Plan, that's going to be coming up as we move forward with, uh, the FY22 budget. Um, and the board can consider that and how we want to incorporate that into our new budgets moving forward. Uh, the Vision Plan is, uh, moving forward, not as, as quickly, I think we're get, trying to get some other projects done first, um, to, to kind of get lined up for that Vision Plan. Um, also racial equality moving forward, discussing that every boardwork session. Another project that's come up is I'm meeting with State Highway on Tuesday to discuss upgrading the lighting downtown, um, from the fluorescents to the LEDs, like they have at the intersection or main at Water. But it's, um, it's a benefit for state because it's called, it saves the money, that they help counter toward their energy efficiency program. And it counts toward us because the LED up lighting helps with security, you can see better, especially when we have pedestrians crossing at night and whatnot, and it just makes the downtown look a bit more lively as well. So I'm meeting with a, um, a state representative there Tuesday evening, and that's all thanks, I think Chief was the big driving force behind that. Um, so thank you, Chief, for getting that started, and, um, Chief's welcome to join me at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, unless you got anything else to do, or Darnell as well. Um, I just got that email today, so I just want to let you guys know that. That's another exciting project we've got moving forward. Um, and I know WSSC's been doing some line work, like Darnell said, we got an email to them about cleaning up the uh, one unnamed to sort property that they damaged, and coming back and doing a better patch job on our church street, um, than what they did. We normally do this, they, we've, they do a temporary patch, we follow up, and they come back and do a much better fix. They've done that on the Spring Branch Drive a few times and some other places. Um, so that we're, we're familiar with the, with the games, um, that they play. And I can take any other questions, if anyone has anything on these or any other. And I can take any other questions if anyone has anything on these or any other projects we have going on.
Kyle, what's the timeline on, I'm sorry, what's the timeline on getting all of individuals that are interested in annexation on board? Like what is our, you know, what data are we pushing for?
Absolutely. So we're hoping to get it tied in with the budget because it's, it does have to sit for, it's kind of like a charter amendment, it does have to sit for a bit. So we're trying to get all signatures that we need this month. And that way we can get the surveyors out to survey the new town boundaries. That'll probably take a week or two. And then they present the new boundaries to the town attorney who then drafts up the, the annexation resolutions. It's kind of similar to a charter because it does affect our charter because our boundaries are listed in the charter. But it's just, it's just for that section. So hopefully, if we can get all the signatures this month, we can have the new properties coming into the town officially and set for the July first budget lining up so that we can plan ahead with the calculating the new taxes coming in and what kind of services we need as well. Right now, it's looking, the main services will be the additional police officers, which is amazing because the police officers mean more police hour coverage that both benefit the residents in town because they're not paying for the extra services. But it's helping the outside, the new annexation areas will help offset the cost for the new officers. So the town benefit, the town residents see a benefit that their patrol hours can drastically increase and they can see a lot more upper Marlboro police more of the time. And then the new areas get it as well because they, they were waiting thirty-five minutes for the county police to respond beforehand, so it's a win-win.
So you mentioned we're twenty-five percent there, so what other areas or who else are we waiting for? Like in terms of getting to them?
Yeah, so it's, so the phases two and three includes going out toward three oh one and then up two oh two a bit. We've got a couple of properties up there who've signed in, so include them. We're not bringing in as many residential properties as we had planned for. It's kind of scaled down a bit. And I was, we, we have this on the, the January work session to kind of talk more in depth. But pretty much we'll be bringing in less than twenty residential properties, I'm saying around fifteen, including Peerless Avenue because of the new development projects that are happening there. So pretty much Peerless Avenue will come into the town, possibly Valley Lane, we'll see. And then parts of two oh two are the residential areas coming in and the commercial areas are that stretch two oh two to three oh one. And then we have a large amount of untouched property right now. That's to the, to the west of town, going out toward Route Four, out near Old Crane Highway. There's a couple hundred acres of untouched forest land that we're bringing in. So that's why it's not a huge hit on services because, one, a lot of it is, it's, it's just undeveloped land that we want to bring in now before it's developed or any talks of development happening. And then, two, the commercial properties have more of a, not a drain, but they benefit more from the police services and public works because we don't have to pick up their trash and recycling. The state will still plow all the roadways, like including two oh two and three oh, and seven twenty-five will just be supporting them like we do now. So it's a pretty low, low-impact annexation on town services. But I'll have a full comprehensive report for the work session before we move anything forward. But once we get those last couple of signatures, I can, we can do a full cost-benefit analysis for the board to consider moving forward, yeah or nay?
Kyle, the uncertainty about that?
I'm sorry.
The uncertainty about Valley Lane is the residents aren't all signing on?
They haven't signed on yet. I don't know if they still have questions, but those, that's one of the property areas that we're going to be talking to to find out, yeah or nay? Do, do they come in or not?
Okay, thank you.
I hope you can clarify for Commissioner Duckett and anyone else, the, the twenty-five percent threshold. It's not a twenty-five percent there, right? I mean, I, I, I believe I heard the question is we are twenty-five percent there, but what, what you meant was five percent threshold of signatures needed in order to proceed. Can you clarify?
Yeah, that's correct, Dave. Thanks for catching that. So just for everyone, so to annex a, a new area in town, there's two requirements. The town has to get at least twenty-five percent of the registered voters in that area as well as twenty-five percent of the, the land value. So if you have multiple property owner, you add up all their property values together, you have to get consent of at least twenty-five percent of those property values. So in this case, it is, we're looking at a total property value area of around forty million dollars in value coming into the town of mixed commercial and residential properties. So we need ten million, we need twenty-five percent. So we're at like ninety-five, nine point five million of consent. And the consent, we haven't had any no signatures except for Home Depot, which we've cut out from the annexation because they, they said that they didn't want to come in, so we cut them out. And maybe moving forward, they'll see the benefit, move forward when they're trying to figure out why they're still waiting thirty-five minutes for a police officer. And other businesses are seeing it much quicker to our officers. So that's, that's the two percentages we're working on. So we have registered voters, we're fast approaching that twenty-five percent requirement and the property owners. I could go on for a while about this.
Yeah, well, thank you for clarifying that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Don't worry, we'll let him go on and on during the work session. And hopefully by then we'll have it pretty well cleared up. Talking with some Valley Lane people here this week later on this week, so hopefully we'll have Valley Lane in because that's very important for me. So that is going onward now. Do either of the commissioners or any of the staff have any other questions or comments?
I actually had a question. You said, Kyle, about the Water Street Bridge, that the county is trying to do their levy project and the state isn't letting them?
No, no, no. So there's two projects going on. I apologize. There's the bridge project that State Highway is doing. And then you have the levy project the county is doing. It sounds like the county was asking the state for, then the state to complete a floodplain permit. And the state said, no, we're not, we're not doing, we're going through our permitting process to get the bridge moving forward. And they also cited heavily in the letter that if the county had, apparently the levy project dates back to twenty sixteen. I was not aware of this. The county put in their budget and their plans to do the levy back in twenty sixteen. So when I first started talking to them about it, it was about two years ago, so I thought they were only two years behind. They're actually four years behind project. And so that's affecting the state. So the state's pretty much moving the bridge project forward and giving the county the information on the bridge saying, because our project's moving forward and it's required, needed, public safety need, you're going to have to change your plans to, to meet our project. It's kind of what it's sounding like. But it's, yeah, we're kind of in the middle of a headbutting war, it sounds like, but the state seems like they're winning.
Okay, but ultimately, both projects will get done. The county may just have to rework theirs.
Correct, yes, slight modifications to the hydraulic flow and surface area of the water, stuff I'm not completely familiar with. I did a lot of Googling, but I guess there's only so much you can understand without an engineering degree. But that's, that is what they're talking about.
Thank you.
Can anybody tell me what's, what was going on with Church Street and all of that noise and banging and digging? What were they?
WSSC is up to something because they're up here too, Patty. There's like something with the mains.
Yeah, they're doing a inspection of the, the water mains, Patty. So what they're doing is they're putting tubes down in the water mains. They broke a main on Old Crane Highway during their inspection process because the, the mains are pretty old. So that's what they're finding out when they're doing. That's why they're opening hydrants, because once they inspect a main, they, they stir up some sediment and whatnot. They've been opening fire hydrants. The opening of the fire hydrants helps, I guess, flush all that sediment and debris out. That's why you may see some fire hydrants open for a couple of hours at a time. We've had, that's caused some flooding on Rectory Lane because we don't have curb and gutter. And we realized, and we found out that the storm drain actually sits a couple inches more than the roadway, so it's going into people's yards instead. So that, that's been stuff we've been working. They've, they've been all over downtown working on. And that's something that is routine that they see elsewhere in the system as well. It's not Upper Marlboro specific. We're just on, we're just on their schedule to do this month, so that's what we're working for. And Darnell has been really good with touching the base with them and talking to what they need and whatnot. But they're, they're on their schedule to, to repair their, to repair their system and make sure we don't have any water main breaks or anything like that coming down the pipe. So that's, it, it's an inconvenience right now, but hopefully it just means that we won't, we won't have any water, huge water main breaks in the future. Because we've, we've learned, actually, I've, I've learned and done some digging on that the town's water system was installed as a part of a New Deal program. And I also acquired the documentation. I'm going to share with the historical committee and the commissioners from the agreement when the town turned over the water mains to WSSC. And WSC pretty much told the town that we hadn't done any repairs or, they had to pay all that money to, to bring the town's pipes into compliance. So I guess this is, they haven't touched the system since, that seems to be the last time we saw a water main rehab.
They were working on it, I thought, a couple of years ago and that, so when they knocked on my door and were like, hey, we need to turn off your water. I was like, I thought that was a few years ago, but they're doing something.
Thank you, Kyle.
Oh, no problem.
Is there anything that anyone else would like to discuss or bring up? This is a time for public comment.
Yes, Joe or Clay?
Yes, Joe.
Do we know how the time schedule for the annexation will like run into the schedule for them doing the redistricting based on the twenty-twenty census?
So we know that with annexation, we will be going, we will have two county council members. The area we're looking to, to annex is Derrick Davis County Council District Six. Because when you look at the council map, it's, it normally follows Route Four for the county council District Nine. But then Upper Marlboro, the down, up, down, or historic Upper Marlboro kind of sits on that like a little pimple. They, they wanted to, the District Nine wanted to scoop the town in. So obviously, once we go past there, we're going to be going into another council member district, which is usually sometimes rare, but our borders represent the council member district boundaries. So we're going to be touching that and seeing how that plays in with the whole this redistricting. I mean, I don't know if Upper Marlboro's annexation will affect their thoughts on redistricting either.
Well, and also the state used to be use seven, seven twenty-five as a district. And my understanding is that as part of redistricting, they are not legally allowed to split up a municipality. And so if we get the action done early enough, they're going to have to move their boundaries.
That's, yeah, that's what we're hoping to, to talk to them about and get everything going. Because it is, especially if you look at the congressional districts and stuff, Upper Marlboro was just cut very, it, it doesn't go with the flow of different roadway. Normally Route Four and Route three oh one are used for the district lines. So that's something where we thought about, we haven't moved forward too much, but we were going to let everyone know once we were moving forward with annexation, especially working with that other county council member, another school board member, and then another congressman as well. So either they change it and redistrict us, or we get twice as many representatives to help fund, but.
Thank you. And I, I will offer to help you if you'd like to look over any of the documentation on the bridge stuff because I actually do have a civil engineering degree. I just haven't actually, but I have the degree.
I'll have to pour you some stuff over, see if you can make sense of it. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, anything else? Okay, it is now eight twenty-four and I hope everyone has a good evening and I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.